All right. Call this meeting to order. This meeting of the Monday, January 13th, Williams County Portal Commissioners, call it to order. First item of the agenda is invocation by Betsy Hester and our pledge of allegiance will be by Boy Scout Troop 241 with Scout Master Steve Brown. Everyone, please stand.
Dear God, I thank you and honor and praise your name, and I thank you for the privilege of living in America and allowing the ability that we have to even meet as a government body. I ask you for your leadership and direction tonight. I ask a special blessing on our troops, and I also thank you indeed for helping us as we make decisions this evening. Help us always remember that we are trying to do our best for our community, and I ask these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
We are glad to have you here tonight. Next, we have roll call. If you are here, press your yes button or present.
Keith, do you have any issues? Hit the confirm and then try it again. And just the yes button. There we go.
I have 24 present.
Next, we have approval of the minutes. These were emailed to you. We'll entertain a motion. Smith, the motion. Osbrook's the second. Are there any corrections or changes or additions? Hearing none, all in favor of the minutes as presented, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Minutes are approved. Citizens Communications. We have two. Our rules say that you have three minutes. First, we have, when you get to the mic, please state your name and your address. First is Laura Turner.
Laura Turner, 1108 Dickinson Lane, Franklin. Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners, and Happy New Year. I hope one of the resolutions this Commission will be making is to take the necessary action to slow the out-of-control growth which has been consuming our county. Uncontrolled growth is the code of a cancer cell. I'm grateful to Mayor Anderson for his recent comments to the Budget Committee. He told them that the Commission must find additional ways to slow growth because the measures the county has taken to try to keep up with growth, like the educational impact fee, are not enough. It will be up to all of you to resolve to vote for planning choices which will successfully sustain our county's economic development engine. The town-and-country lifestyle we enjoy is dependent on the country part, and that country part is the county. I certainly don't want to say "I told you so," but it is true that citizens have been standing up and speaking out for rural landscape preservation for decades, and we did so in 2007 with the last update to the Comprehensive Land Use Plan. We are doing so again with the update that is being undertaken now. There is overwhelming support by citizens for the town-and-country planning choice, one unit to five acres versus the business-as-usual choice, which is one unit to one acre. On another issue, since we moved here in 1984, I've been a strong advocate of animal welfare. Back then, the shelter was called rabies control, and the unwanted animals, dogs, cats, puppies, and kittens, were put in a gas chamber every Friday to suffer horrific deaths. Some animals were given to Vanderbilt and Mahary for research. The words spay and neuter were rarely used. I applaud the resolution to fund the salary for a new vet tech at the Williamson County Animal Center to assist in the cat spay and neuter program. I would also encourage you to consider purchasing a spay-neuter tag. Representative Charles Sargent, God rest his soul, sponsored the legislation which created this tag, and it has been funding spays and neuters across the state for years. As you can see on the tag, it says "Spay-neuter saves lives." Thank you.
Next, we have Dory Bowles.
Good evening. My name is Dory Bowles, and I'm the Executive Director, actually CEO and President of the Harpeth Conservancy, and I'm also have been the Chair of the Stormwater Appeals Board for several years, and I've served on it, I think, since 2004 when it was first formed. And I just wanted to provide you some background and comments tonight. I provided you with some details this afternoon in an email with a letter. I spoke with Greg Lawrence over the weekend, and we thought it would be really helpful to sort of provide some of the background and work our organization has done over 20 years with the county on stormwater. And tonight, there are appointments for some of the positions on the Stormwater Appeals Board, and I won't be up again. I did not realize that until this weekend, but that board works really well, and I want you to know that it's really been wonderful to serve on it, and we have a great group of members. And the Stormwater Appeals Board is a bit interesting because the bylaws specify having an engineer, having a development representative, and in my case, I was serving as the environmental representative. And you really want to make sure you have somebody who has that sort of background in science and water quality or environmental law, and then we have someone who represents home builders, and it has been, we've had some very complex issues come before us over the years. So if you don't mind for just a few minutes, I'll just rattle off some of the stuff we've done with the county and some of the work we've done on stormwater. I have about 35 years of conservation policy experience, but when I moved to Tennessee and started working on river conservation, stormwater is one of those big issues. And the Williamson County has been wonderful to work with. We actually were able to secure a grant from the EPA back in 2003, a $200,000 grant. The county was a partner, the City of Franklin was a partner, and we had several development partners, engineering partners, and we worked all very hard on sort of trying to tailor the kinds of rules and regulations that some would work better in a city environment, those in a county environment. And it was a really productive 18 months. That was already after the county had invested a fair amount of money and consulting firm and their own staff had done a tremendous amount of work. So I think you all should be really proud of the work that's been going on in stormwater in Williamson County. In addition to that, our organization has brought together over a million dollars in different grants and funds that have gone on the ground, lots with farmers in Egleville, doing demonstration projects with developers. A lot of it to sort of help go, hey, this approach could work, or let's try it and see what we need to change. Worked with schools, and actually, since the Harpeth River is in six counties, it's worked, you know, from Egleville to Dixon to Nashville to Brentwood to various areas of Williamson County and City of Franklin. And what's interesting, too, is that your very first stormwater coordinator then ultimately came to work for us for a while to run that grant, and then he went to the state in order to be the first manager of the stormwater program. So we've been very involved for years in sort of the environmental policy and shaping, working with home builders as these rules change. And that's one of the things that's kind of a challenge because then there'll be lawsuits, and then you're trying to figure out, like, what do we do next? So it's been very valuable to have people on the board that have that variety of networks and experience. I also just want to touch on, we work a lot as well as an organization on, like, road transportation planning. I was, I served on the TDOT Environmental Action, sorry, Environmental Advisory Committee and the 840 Redesign Committee, and a lot of it was about getting more right-of-way and designing roads for stormwater so you don't have as much runoff. Our staff also has a lot of experience, and we work with the Legislature a lot, and the, as I said, TDOT and TDEC. To switch gears for a second, we've done a lot with Williamson County on land use planning. As Laura was mentioning earlier, our organization was heavily involved in the first Comprehensive Land Use Plan update. One of our board members used to be a county commissioner in Dixon County and helped write the chapter, Public 1101. So we have a really deep knowledge of the urban growth boundary law, and we've worked a lot in Fairview, Thompson Station, and across the middle of Tennessee on sewer.
30 seconds.
Thank you. I'm almost done. But sewer is a very interesting issue, especially in Williamson County and in Rutherford, somewhat in Fairview. When you have non-discharging sewer systems, you have discharging sewer systems, some don't privately, some are public, very complex set of issues on how to solve some of those problems as well and where to get the money. So I just wanted to wrap up. Our staff has, we have a PhD academic scientist on water quality from the University of Toledo. We have an attorney with environmental law from Vanderbilt. My master's degree is in environmental management in Yale School of Forestry, and we're sort of the premier conservation organization in Tennessee on water quality, stormwater restoration, and river protection. And we're just going to keep working with you guys, and I appreciate and honor, I appreciate and thank you for the honor for serving. And if there's anything I can do to help, I'll still be attending Stormwater Appeals Board meetings when there's topics that matter, and I thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we have reports of county offices. County Mayor. Well, let me get to communications and messages. I did leave that out. We have three late filed resolutions. Resolution 1-20-16, 1-20-17, 1-20-18. Are there any, these were heard by committee. Is there any objections to hearing these? They are added to the agenda. County Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let me ask Nina Graham to come up and give you a snapshot of the county for the last 60 days.
Thank you, Mayor and Commission. In your packets this evening, you have your monthly reports for October and November. The first report is from the Cool Springs Conference Center. For the month of October, we had a gain of $96,722. For the month of November, there was a loss of $6,258, but year-to-date, we've had a net increase of a little over $145,000. Also in your packets are your budget reports for October and November. There's nothing unusual to report to you this evening in either of those months. Also in your packet is the education impact fee. The collections life-to-date are $47.5 million. A little over $20 million has been used for projects. $13.7 is paid under protest, and total available for projects is $13.6 million. Also in your packet are your privileged tax reports for October. We collected a little over $1.7 million, and November, a little over $1.5 million. Also in your packets are a memo of the CT-0253 forms. Each time we issue debt, the Comp Triller's Office requires that we submit these to the We had $75.1 million issued with an interest rate of 2.41, and $49.780 million of county district bonds with an interest rate of 2.42. On that report, also listed our current outstanding debt. The direct debt with this issue added in is a little over $853 million, but that does not include the principal payments for the current year, and those are a little over $46.6 million. So those are my reports. If you have any questions.
Are there any questions? I don't see any. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, let me say I appreciate Dory Bowles' service that she has given us. She's done a very good job, and I apologize for her not getting an advanced copy that she would not be nominated back in that position. I have told her that on the phone when she called me on Saturday. On a different note, I wish you'd put on your calendar for the 29th at 7:00. You should have got a notice of that to come down to the Under Richmond Center. We will be having a city-county planning growth breakfast. The meeting will start somewhere around 7:30. Coffee and juice and a few things will be provided that morning, and we'll try to wrap it up at 9:00. Both Franklin and Williamson County staff will be talking and entertaining any questions you may have. That's all I've got to report. Answer any questions.
Any questions of the Mayor? Seeing none, thank you. Williams County Schools, Director Golden.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Glad to see everyone after the holidays. I did want to mention to you our school numbers. In the past month, since about this time in December, we've grown by 115 students, and that's pretty consistent with what we expected that I've mentioned to you a few months ago. Over the holidays, we tend to have significant growth. That places our total growth since the beginning of last year at 1101, so we're 62 students over our projection for this current budget year. And so from a budgeting perspective, we're fine because of that preparation. The total student number, including pre-K and early childhood, is 41,740, if you're interested in that. I did want to also mention to you that we have our ribbon cutting at Creekside Elementary School scheduled for Sunday, January 26th at 2:00 p.m., so do want to invite you for that. I always enjoy those because there are children involved, you know, and they've got scissors, which is great. And it's really, it's really nice to see those children enjoy that new school facility. So I want to thank you all for that. We received our certificate of occupancy today, actually, from the state, so we're very excited about that, and again, would like to invite you there. We have a handful of resolutions on your agenda, but I open the floor for questions if you have any.
Seeing none?
I had a chance to look over the capital improvement plan.
Yes, ma'am.
But I don't understand all the vocabulary because some of it's anachronisms that I don't understand. There's the ESCO third phase, that's $2 million. What's ESCO?
That's the Energy Savings Corporation. That's the projects we do to fund energy-saving projects out of the savings rather than create a debt that we pay off straight. So that is, we've been doing that in phases to improve the lighting systems, improve water, et cetera, to reduce our energy consumption. And it's Energy Savings, Mark, Corporation?
Energy Savings Performance Contract.
Oh, it's a performance contract, Mark Samuel's described.
Is this the one with, is it train that we?
Yes, ma'am.
So I thought the point was with that, that it's supposed to pay for itself.
Yes. On paper, we have to commit to the debt on the front end, and then we pay it, we pay it over the course of time with the energy savings, and it's a guaranteed contract with train that in the event the energy savings does not pay for itself, they will cover that gap.
So this is like temporary money? We foot the bill and then they reimburse us if it doesn't?
That's correct.
So you just want $2 million there in case it's?
That's construction cost, and so it shows up on our books as debt, but there's an additional contract to cover that with that, with that energy company.
So we're going to get the money, we're not going to spend $2 million when it's all done?
That's correct. Ultimately, the net is we'll end up ahead under the terms of the contract.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah. Well, I can't remember the rest of my questions.
We do live by apprehend. So if you all have any questions about any of those, feel free to, feel free to let us know from time to time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Betsy has a question. Hang on.
When do you think you'll be moving in at Creekside? Do you have?
Our students are scheduled to move in January 22nd and the ribbon cutting on the 26th.
Thank you.
Our teachers have been moving in their furniture and materials over the last couple of weeks.
Very good.
Commissioner Mason?
We are actually having button issues up here. I pushed mine in order to defer to my counterpart, but he got his button working, so.
Commissioner Hudson?
Just a quick question. We're talking about growth, and also, we are, we have a resolution that we'll be voting on tonight regarding additional buses.
Yes, sir.
The question that I have is, I've been sent emails and also photographs of buses where students are standing due to lack of bus drivers. I would like to know, what are we doing in order to recruit more bus drivers because we're getting into a safety issue with the children standing?
Sure. Well, number one, students shouldn't be standing on the bus, and so that's something that I appreciate you letting us know. We emphasize that to our drivers, that students should be sitting down on the bus, and if a student stands, they need to pull over until that student's able to sit. We have two size buses, 84-passenger buses and 78. Each seat officially seats three, so six and six, 84-passenger, 78s have one row fewer. From a recruiting standpoint, bus driver recruiting is a challenge in middle Tennessee and many metro areas across this country. We've hit it on a number of fronts. Number one, we were in a crisis about two and a half, three years ago where we couldn't even with delays serve all, serve all our students. And you all, as a Commission, helped us do a significant pay raise for drivers. It actually helped us avert the crisis. Right now, we have a driver assigned to every route, but the reality is that people get sick on a daily basis. So we're actually short on enough sub-drivers to be able to cover the days as folks get sick from time to time. So pay is one thing, and that's, but pay isn't enough. We also recruit at job fairs. We recruit directly. Every opportunity I get when we talk about drivers with our families, I tell them, if we had about 15 or so more drivers to cover those sick days, we'd be fine. Do you know somebody? Do you know somebody who might be retired and is looking for health insurance? Because we cover health insurance for our drivers. That's actually a very trustworthy, attractive group of folks. Retired from another job, they're looking to work in the morning, get a little bit of time in the afternoon, and have free time in the middle of the day. So I would encourage you all and those listening to this, if there's somebody who's interested, let us know. Because another recruiting tool we use is, we actually have a state-certified trainer, multiple trainers, and state-certified tester, and so we can do everything to train and get a driver on the road within our facility, and it's free. On top of that, we actually pay those driver candidates $10 an hour to train because recruiting is so difficult. And it's now, the pay, starting pay for a driver is $18 and change an hour, and I think many of you, especially those of you who own businesses, know how hard it is to find staff here in southern middle Tennessee because the economy's doing so well. But we do constant recruiting from a broad perspective, the shotgun approach to the more specific approach where we're asking for individuals. We have a wonderful group of drivers, but we are a little short. Some of our neighbors have actually canceled sections of their routes over the last couple of years. We haven't hit that point, but there are times where there's delays as a driver is missing and two drivers might have to split that route to finish them up on an afternoon if a driver's not available. With all our hourly pay jobs, it's a constant challenge, and it's a tough job. I know it's a long answer, but recruiting is a challenge right now.
Anything else? Commissioner Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was also going to add to that, Director. Aren't there cameras on the buses? So if somebody has an allegation of a child doing something, they can report it to you all, and the camera can look at it, and maybe parents can be instructed to teach their children more about bus behavior. Are there, is there indeed a camera on every bus?
Yes, ma'am. There are cameras on our buses. There are four cameras, actually. One points out forward and we, you know, towards the exterior. One is straight, and we have two pointed towards the inside.
Terrific.
And so, yes, we do have the power to check those, to check those video cameras, and we've heard stories about that, and that does sometimes happen, and that's why we do ask for that to be reported to us so that we can make sure we're safe.
Thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am.
Is there anything else? Thank you. Next, we have Kathy Montgomery with the Health Department.
Good evening, everyone. I wanted to say, first of all, that this flu season has been a real booger, no pun intended, but there is still time to get your flu shot. Every county health department in the state is still offering free flu vaccinations right now, so if you haven't had one, please get one. I did want to report out about a flu vaccination emergency operation plan that we actually exercised back on November 19th, and we actually provided vaccines, free flu vaccinations, at three different sites throughout the county, at Longview and Fairview Rec Centers and our early voting precinct here in the county complex. We also practiced our first-ever drive-through flu dispensing point of dispensing, so it was really, really successful. We did it at the Longview Rec Center where people drove up, they filled out a form, we vaccinated them in their vehicle, and they were free to go. So that's the way to go if we ever have an outbreak or anything in our community, a really tremendous exercise for us. Our goal this year was to provide 122 because we're kind of late in the game offering flu vaccinations in November. Last year, in 2018, we provided only 88. This year, we provided 233 vaccinations, which was really outstanding, second in our region. We never could do what we do without our partners, of course, so great, great thanks to Gordon Hampton, to Chad Gray and their teams for helping us coordinate things. But I especially want to give a deep kudo to Todd Horton, who helped us develop our drive-through at Longview Rec Center. He stood by us the day of the operation, gave us some tremendous feedback for making improvements for next year, so did want to definitely let you know about that. On a more serious note, you have in front of you a copy of suicide in Williamson County. So I wanted to just preface this by saying that we worked with Vanderbilt University Medical Center to do a community health needs assessment a couple of years ago, and suicide, our suicide rates and prevention was one of the topics, the priorities that came out of the data. And so I will tell you that from 2013 to 2018, we had 143 suicide deaths in Williamson County, most of those from middle-aged white males. More alarming, though, to me was the calls for service, and let me give a shout-out right now to Steve Martini in the comm center. He's done an amazing job giving us the data that we needed on those calls for service. And I can tell you that from July 2017 to December 2019, there were 733 calls for service that law enforcement went out because of threats of suicide, and another 284 calls for service just on suicide attempts in our county. I will tell you on a positive note that Mayor Moore has pulled together a task force, and this task force consists of mental health, juvenile court, Xanny Martin's sitting on it, the schools are sitting on this task force, and we're really trying to work on some ideas around educating our community about signs and symptoms of suicide ideation, compiling those community resources. Where are we going to send folks that need? Where are we going to send folks that need assistance, that might be thinking about threatening suicide? And then creating kind of a diversion plan for folks that need immediate help or are in crisis. I can tell you that we've just recently, on Friday, submitted a grant to Vanderbilt so that we can do some education in the community. We're going to certify folks in question, persuade, and refer. It's an evidence-based practice, QPR training, where we can go out and try to alert our community about what those signs and symptoms of suicide look like. So just wanted to kind of update you on where we're going and what's going on. So if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer. I'm not the expert on this, but I play one on TV and I can try to answer what I can.
Are there any questions?
Thank you.
Seeing none, thank you. Are there any other departments or committees wishing to make a report? All right, moving on with the agenda. Next, we have elections and appointments. Public Records Commission, genealogist representative, deceased Richard Spencer, nomination David Egan. Entertainer motion? Commissioner Hester, the motion, the second was Commissioner Williams. All in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed?
Would you make sure everybody's used a revised page two?
Yes. There was a revised page two of the agenda that was on your desk and we will be referring to that. There was a couple of things that were placed wrong on the agenda, so if you would, that's the one we'll be going by. Regional Planning Commission, filling unexpired term expiring of 3 of 21, resigned Paul Pratt Jr., nominee Keith McCord. Commissioner Smith, the motion, Commissioner Rosbrooks, the second. All in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Stormwater Appeals Board, residential commercial development representative, term expiring, Davis Lamb, nomination, nominee David Lamb. Homeowners Association Representative, Brad Hoot, nomination Brad Hoot. And Environmental Representative, Dory Bowles, nominee, term expiring, nominee Liz McLaren. Entertain a motion?
Aye, I have a motion. So that we can discuss qualifications before we move on to vote?
This is a TCA code, mayor-appointed. We can either vote up or down.
I understand. I understand that, but I'd still like to discuss the qualifications of the nominee.
Okay, all right.
Okay. I just, I took the time to look at the nominee's qualifications and they're very impressive for Dory Bowles' replacement, Liz McLaren. But according to Tennessee Code, which creates our stormwater ordinance, we're supposed to be replacing her with an environmental professional. And Dory's background, Mrs. Bowles' background, is 35 years of experience as an environmental science expert with a degree from Yale. She has knowledge on water quality, fluid dynamics, stormwater control. She has technical and scientific experience and knowledge. And Liz McLaren, although has a long history of leadership in, like, metros, Nashville, livable Nashville Committee, Plan to Play Steering Committee, Food and Waste Initiative, and she works with the land trust, I think she leads the land trust, she's got a lot of leadership experience. She has a degree in theater and a lot of experience in communications and a history of leadership, but I don't believe she's the right fit for a technical expert. So I would make a plea that we forego Liz and try to find someone with a stronger technical background. I have, I have a lot of constituents and stormwater issues are one of their top reasons for calling me. And a lot of those issues are houses that were built before we even had a stormwater control board. But it's very important to my community that, you know, one, we have high water quality and that we have a science-based solution to our issues, which I believe is one of the missions of the Stormwater Board. I'm asking the commission to not approve Liz McLaren, not because she isn't a fantastic leader in our county, it's just I don't believe she has the technical credentials to fill this role, especially with the loss of a technical expert of 35 years, so...
Commissioner Hester?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've had the honor to serve on stormwater, commit the Stormwater Amendment Commission for about three years now. And Dory has been giving us wonderful leadership. She's, she is very knowledgeable and she's been very patient and very giving with her time. She is our chairman at this time and she's taken us through times when we didn't have a quorum and we, she was very respectful of that, but we did discuss the issues. And I think that, I'm not going to pat myself on the back, but I think Dory's done a good job and I'd like to thank her. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak? Commissioner Beathard?
To the motion, do we have a motion on the floor? I'm not necessarily speaking to that.
No, we're speaking to the nomination.
Well, and all I wanted to do is similar to what Betsy has done, and that is to thank Dory for her years of service and the time I've known her. She has been intelligent, passionate, a value, valuable asset to the community, as I know she will continue to be with her work with the watershed. I just wanted to personally thank her for her years of service and her devotion to this community.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Seeing, I'm sorry, seeing none, I assume you're ready to vote. All in favor of the nominee, say aye. Aye, opposed?
I have a motion.
Okay, all right, hang on. We're voting, yes, right now, we're voting on Liz McLaren as the nominee.
We have a motion on the other side.
We're voting on all three of them, all right. Let's take, all right, all right. We'll, all right, we'll back up, we'll take them one at a time and vote one at a time then. Trying, trying to rush through for a ballgame, I think. All right. Term expiring David Lamb, nominee Davis Lamb. All in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed? Term expiring Brad Hoot, nominee Brad Hoot. All in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Term expiring Dory Bowles, nominee Liz McLaren. All in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed? Raise your hands, please.
Six.
Have you got them? Six. Okay, all right, thank you. The nominee is Liz McLaren. Adjustment and Appeals Board, building industry, term expiring Kenneth Schot, nominee Kenneth Schot, building industry, term expiring John Lee, nominee John Lee. Entertain a motion?
Motion.
Commissioner Smith, the motion, Commissioner Rosbrooks, the second. All in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Public Administrator, Guardian, and Trustee, term expiring in January of '24, term expiring Jack Welsh, nominee Russell Gill.
Move for approval.
All right, Dwight Jones, the motion, and Commissioner Steve Smith, the second. All in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have the consent agenda that was in your packet. Got it loaded, load the consent agenda. Do we have to move that? We need, all right, need a motion for the consent agenda?
Yep.
Rosbrooks, the motion, is there a second? Second, Commissioner Dwight Jones, a second. If you're in favor, press your yes button, opposed, your no. Anyone who wants to change your vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, please.
24, yes, zero, no.
Consent agenda passes. Next, we have the public hearing for the proposed amendment to the Williamson County zoning ordinance. At this time, we will call the public hearing to order. If you wish to speak to the zoning ordinance change regarding private streets and gated subdivisions, if you would, please come to the microphone, state your name and address.
Good evening, my name's Matt Bryant, 1475 Columbia Avenue. I'm an engineer and a resident of Williamson County for the last 13 years and just wanted to voice my support of this resolution. I think it's something that's needed in the county and I think, I think it will be beneficial to the county as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak? Public hearing, going once, going twice, hearings closed. Resolution 1-20-5, a resolution to amend Article 17 of the Williamson County zoning ordinance regarding requirements for private streets and gated subdivisions. Commissioner Lothers?
Move for approval.
I'm sorry?
I made a motion in a second and I'll just...
Who's the second? Commissioner Story, the second. Planning Commission?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, so as...
Committee report was, Planning Commission?
Planning Commission was unanimous.
You have seven, four, I think, zero against, all right.
Correct.
Now, explanation, please.
Yes, thank you. Basically, in November 14th, 2018, we approved this change in our zoning ordinance, kind of reverting back to the original. Some of you were here when I wasn't in 2013, when it was taken out of the zoning ordinance. For all of the reasons listed here, staff has responded and I think the Planning Commission and also to citizens' requests and private property owners' requests to bring in the gated option back in the zoning ordinance. There's also some benefits in us not having to maintain those streets and so forth. I would just say, for those who have concerns about community being gated, ungated, I'm the hope is that a gated community, community will be part of the larger community in all ways, but we also look at the private property's need for some, this potential reversion back to gated. I'm here for questions, but I think staff's here too. Thanks.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Seeing none, I assume you're ready to vote. All in favor, press your yes button, opposed, your no. Anyone who wants to change your vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson. Amendment to the zoning regulation passes. Resolution 1-20-1, resolution requesting the Williamson County Board, Williamson County Board of County Commissioners, approval of $2,031,000 for the purchase of buses for the 2020-21 school year. Commissioner Tonac Cliff?
Move for approval.
Commissioner Dwight Jones, the second. School Board was 12, 4, 0 against. Education Committee?
It was unanimous, I am not positive of the number of attendees at the meeting.
Budget Committee? Explanation, please.
This is the school system looking to order some buses, they need to be ordered now, paid for partially now, the delivery timeframe, to have them for the start of next school year.
Are there any questions? Seeing none, I assume you're ready to vote. If you're in favor, press your yes button, opposed, your no. All right, do you want to voice vote it for yours? Okay, that's fine. And you said yes vote, all right, record the vote, please.
24, yes, zero, no.
There we go, all right.
That's included, Mr. Hudson.
All right, thank you. All right. Resolution passes. Yeah, okay. Resolution 1-20-2, resolution amending the 2019-20 general purpose school fund by $367,160 from unappropriated fund balance for startup costs for a middle school. Commissioner Tonac Cliff?
Move for approval.
Commissioner, I'm sorry, Commissioner Story, the second. School Board was 12, 4, 0 against. Education Committee?
Once again, we were unanimous, unsure of the count.
Budget Committee?
5, 4, 0 against.
Explanation, please.
This is a resolution asking for funds for the new middle school on Henpeck Lane to get started up.
Are there any questions? Seeing none, I assume you're ready to vote. If you're in favor, press your yes button. Opposed, your no. Anyone who wants to change your vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, please.
24, yes, zero, no.
Now, he's got him as a... Yeah, she's going to count you as absent and let you voice vote it for the record. All right, now, record the vote, please. 24, yes.
24, yes.
All right. Resolution passes. Resolution 21-20-3, resolution for intercategory adjustment of the approved raise and last phase of the classified pay adjustment for the 2019-20 budget year. Commissioner Tonac Cliff?
Move for approval.
Commissioner Story, the second. School Board was 12, 4, 0 against. Education Committee?
Once again, unanimous, unsure of the count.
Budget Committee?
5, 4, 0 against.
Explanation, please.
This is moving the funds within the budget to allow for the final part of the raises for Williamson County teachers and staff.
Are there any questions? Seeing none, I assume you're ready to vote. If you're in favor, press your yes button. Opposed, your no. Record the vote, please. Resolution passes. Resolution 1-20-6, resolution appropriating and amending the 2019-20 planning department budget by $30,000 for the completion of the update to the Williamson County Comprehensive Land Use Plan, revenues to come from unappropriated county fund balance. Commissioner Webb?
Move for approval.
Second.
Commissioner Nation's the second. Budget Committee?
5, 4, 0 against.
Explanation, please.
As you can see, there's $30,000 left over for a prior fiscal year that will be used to fund this year's, the next phase of the Comprehensive Land Use Plan.
Are there any questions? Seeing none, I assume you're ready to vote. If you're in favor, press your yes button, opposed, your no. Anyone who wants to change your vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, please.
24, yes, zero, no.
Resolution passes. Resolution 1-20-7, resolution amending the 2019-20 highway department budget and appropriating up to $558,952.07 for paving expense, revenues to come from state aid program. Commissioner Webb?
Move for approval.
Second.
Commissioner Lothers, the second. Highway Commission was 4, 4, 0 against. Budget Committee?
5, 4, 0 against.
Explanation, please.
You can see this, these are funds coming from the state aid program, primarily for Cox Road, which has already been paved, so this is a reimbursement from the state of Tennessee.
Are there any questions? Are there any questions? Seeing none, I assume you're ready to vote. If you're in favor, press your yes button, opposed your no. Anyone who wants to change your vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, please.
24, yes, 0, no.
Resolution passes. Resolution 1-20-8, resolution appropriating and amending the 2019-20 Animal Control Budget by $1,300, revenues to come from state grant funds. Commissioner Webb?
Move for approval.
Commissioner Osbrook, the second. Public Health Committee? Commissioner Rainey? It was, all right, four, it was four...
4, 0.
Budget Committee?
5, 4, 0 against.
Explanation, please.
You can see, this is a grant for animal control, provide a low-cost sterilization of dogs and cats, this is coming from the state of Tennessee.
Are there any questions? Seeing none, I assume you're ready to vote.
The cats.
If you're in favor, press your yes button, opposed your no. All right, count him as, I guess, count him as absent.
So they can't vote until she switches it over, and that may be some of the problem, that they're pushing it too fast.
Okay. Record the vote, please.
Are you not run, county excused?
Well, he's voting, verbal voting, it'd be 24.
24, yes, 0, no.
Thank you. Resolution passes. One thing to point out, if you would wait until she gets it up there where it says "vote" before you push your button, that may be something that's causing it, we don't know for certain, but wait until she gets the screen changed over before you push your button. Resolution 1-20-15, resolution appropriating and amending the 2019-20 Animal Control and Adoption Center budget by $25,000 to fund a vet tech position, revenues to come from donations. Commissioner Webb?
Move for approval.
Second.
Commissioner Lothers, the second. Public Health Committee?
4, 4, 0, unanimous.
Budget Committee?
5, 4, 0 against.
Explanation, please.
You can see, this is to hire a part-time veterinarian technician, and the funding is coming from the Animal Control Donations Reserve and further donations.
Are there any questions? Seeing none, I assume you're ready to vote. If you're in favor, press your yes button, opposed your no. It knows we want to go watch a ballgame.[1014.36][1014.36](LAUGHING). All right, do you want to voice vote? There it goes, all right. Record the vote, please. Resolution passes. Late filed Resolution 1-20-16, resolution appropriating and amending the 2019-20 Parks and Recreation Budget by $62,119.50, revenues to come from donations. Commissioner Webb?
Move for approval.
Second.
Commissioner Nation's the second. Parks and Rec Committee?
6, 4, 0 against.
Budget Committee?
5, 4, 0 against.
Explanation, please.
As you can see, these are donations that will be used by the Parks Department, and the details are listed here on the resolution.
Are there any questions? Seeing none, I assume you're ready to vote. If you're in favor, press your yes button, opposed your no. Record the vote, please.
24, yes, 0, no.
Resolution passes. Late filed Resolution 1-20-17, resolution appropriating and amending the 2019-20 Parks and Recreation Capital Improvement Plan, $100,000, revenues to come from privilege tax. Commissioner Webb?
Move for approval.
Commissioner Dwight Jones, the second. Parks and Recreation Committee?
6, 4, 0 against.
Budget Committee?
5, 4, 0 against.
Explanation, please.
These are funds coming from the privilege tax to do some improvements in the basement of the Fairview Recreation Center.
Are there any questions? Seeing none, I assume you're ready to vote. If you're in favor, press your yes button, opposed your no. Anyone who wants to change your vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, please. Resolution passes. Late filed Resolution 1-20-18, resolution appropriating and amending the 2019-20 Parks and Recreation Department budget by $50,000, revenues to come from participant fees. Commissioner Webb?
Move for approval.
I'm sorry. Dwight Jones, the second. Parks and Recreation Committee?
6, 4, 0 against.
Budget Committee?
5, 4, 0 against.
Explanation, please.
As you can see, these are fees collected at the former art center, and this is the Parks Department participate, share of those fees.
Are there any questions? Seeing none, I assume you're ready to vote. If you're in favor, press your yes button, opposed your no. Not having any luck, Judy?
Yeah.
There you go. Record, anyone who wants to change your vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, please.
24, yes, 0, no.
Resolution passes. Resolution 1-20-4, resolution to adopt the 2020 Williamson County Road List. Commissioner Webb?
Move for approval.
Second.
Commissioner Nation's the second. Highway Commission was 4, 4, and 0 against. Explanation, please.
As you can see, this is simply the list of roads that we will approve every year. The details are provided, and folks from the Highway Commission are here if we have questions.
All right. Commissioner Sturgeon?
That was not intended, I'm sorry.
Okay.[1267.33][1267.33](LAUGHING). Are there any other questions? Seeing none, I assume you're ready to vote. If you're in favor, press your yes button, opposed your no. Anyone who wants to change your vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, please.
24, yes, 0, no.
Resolution passes. Resolution 1-20-9, a resolution amending the five-year capital improvement program for schools, roads, fire protections, and recreation. Commissioner Webb?
Move for approval.
Second.
Commissioner Dwight Jones, the second. Law Enforcement, Public Safety?
5, 4, 0 against.
Highway Commission was 4, 4, 0 against. Education Committee?
5, 4, 0 against.
Parks and Recreation Committee?
6, 4, 0 against.
Budget Committee?
5, 4, 0 against.
Explanation, please.
As you can see, this is the five-year plan as required for us to submit, and this also required for us to assess the adequate facility tax and the adequate facility school tax.
This is just a highway roadmap, not an approval to fund. Are there any questions? Seeing none, I assume you're ready to vote. If you're in favor, press your yes button, opposed your no. Anyone who wants to change your vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, please.
24, yes, 0, no.
Resolution passes. Resolution 1-20-10, resolution to amend the Charter of the Sports Authority of Williamson County, Tennessee. Commissioner Webb?
Move for approval.
Second.
Commissioner Dwight Jones, the second. Park Recreation Committee?
6, 4, 0 against.
Budget Committee?
5, 4, 0 against.
Explanation, please.
This is an amendment required to make sure that the Sports Authority meets the requirements of the IRS for a 501(c)(3) status.
Are there any questions? Seeing none, I assume you're ready to vote. If you're in favor, press your yes button. Down to two. What is it about the back row tonight?
It's a virus.
Can we voice vote you?
I don't know if people hear.
All right. Anyone who wants to change your vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, please.[1465.41][1465.41](LAUGHING). Resolution passes. Resolution 1-20-11, resolution authorizing the Williams County Mayor to execute a memorandum of understanding with the Williamson County Law Enforcement Foundation Incorporated concerning donations made for Project Lifesaver purchased made on behalf of the Williamson County Sheriff's Department. Commissioner Hylla?
This is a, no, sorry. Motion to approve.
Second.
Commissioner Dwight Jones, the second. Law Enforcement, Public Safety Committee?
5, 4, 0 against.
Budget Committee?
5, 4, 0 against.
Now, explanation.
I'll be happy to. This is a resolution regarding the acceptance and earmarking of certain funds for Project Lifesaver on behalf of Williamson County Sheriff's Office.
Are there any questions? Seeing none, I assume you're ready to vote. If you're in favor, press your yes button, opposed your no. Anyone who wants to change your vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, please.
24, yes, 0, no.
Resolution passes. Resolution 1-20-12, resolution returning ownership of K-9 dog donated to the Williamson County Sheriff's Department to Nashville K-9. Commissioner Hylla?
Move for approval.
Second.
Commissioner Dwight Jones, the second. Law Enforcement and Public Safety Committee?
5, 4, 0 against.
Property Committee?
I believe it was 5, 0, 5, yes, 0, no.
Budget Committee?
5, 4, 0 against.
Explanation, please.
Since the retirement of Ammo's Handler, Nashville's agreed to take the K-9 back, so this is returning him to Nashville.
Are there any questions? Seeing none, I assume you're ready to vote. If you're in favor, press your yes button, opposed your no. Anyone who wants to change your vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, please.
24, yes, 0, no.
Resolution passes. Resolution 1-20-13, resolution authorizing the Williamson County Mayor to execute a mitigation project agreement and related easement with HGSLLC concerning Williamson County-owned real property located off Giles Hill Road. Commissioner Webb?
Move for approval.
Second.
Commissioner Dwight Jones, the second. Property Committee?
5, yes, 0, no.
I had six down.
Four, six, yeah.
All right. Parks and Recreation Committee?
6, 4, 0 against.
Budget Committee?
5, 4, 0 against.
Explanation, please.
In this case, this firm has approached us to a mitigation agreement, and they will pay us for doing this. This is kind of like banking credits for doing the mitigation. We will benefit for the property as well as financially. We do have Parks reps here if they have any questions.
Are there any questions? Seeing none, I assume you're ready to vote. If you're in favor, press your yes button, opposed your no. Anyone who wants to change your vote, do so at this time, at your own risk. Record the vote, please. Resolution passes. Resolution 1-20-14, resolution authorizing the Williams County Mayor to grant a right-of-way slope easement and a temporary construction easement to the Tennessee Department of Transportation. Commissioner Webb?
Move for approval.
Commissioner Dwight Jones, the second. Property Committee?
6, 0.
6, 4. Parks and Recreation Committee?
6, 4, 0 against.
Budget Committee?
5, 4, 0 against.
Explanation, please.
What we're being asked to do is give a right-of-way to the Tennessee Department of Transportation, and they will need that to install sidewalks, curbs, and gutters in front of the property along State Route 100. And they will also put a value, there's no value on this, but anyway, this is another positive movement for us.
Are there any questions? Seeing none, I assume you're ready to vote. If you're in favor, press your yes button, opposed your no. Anyone who wants to change your vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, please. Resolution passes. I believe that wraps up our agenda. Do we hear a motion to adjourn?
Subway.
We are adjourned.